... Yeah, he goes. Professor out there and he'd like to start playing the whole time. Don't you have?
Yes, sir.
My hands are hot.
Hot.
It would be hot, but you know, I'm not sweet. Well, I welcome everybody here. It's a pleasure to see a room full of people with no rotten tomatoes in their hands or anything like that. No posters. No, it is. It's a pleasure. We always love people to come out. Y'all know who we work for and uh that's why we're up here teaching every one of us. So, thank y'all for being here tonight and I hope that this this cooler weather will hold off until we get you out of here and give you a safe trip home. Um, normally we have a a prayer and a pledge and by this time I've already had someone if they wanted to say the prayer. Uh, last month I started out with it, so I like to pass it on each month to different people, so. My four cohorts, if anybody just has a burning desire to say the prayer, I'll accept your uh desire to do so. Don't all speak at one time.
I'll do it if you'd like. May I?
Okay, Julie. Thank you.
You're in. Good. Uh, pray with me please if you will. Father, we thank you for this this day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. We thank you for the state of this country and we thank you for all the many freedoms and privileges we enjoy as US citizens. We pray, Father, for those who are serving our country, protecting our borders and ask, Father, that you'll also be with the family of Chief Jim Smith in their times of mourning just to help them to know that you're with them and give them peace, Father. And uh we thank you for having the opportunity to have Jim in our lives and the way that he served this community. He's a a fine example of a true gentleman and and we just know that he's with you now, Father. We thank you for the impact that he had on our lives. Help us to conduct ourselves in a way that will make you proud. Help us to be honest, open, and and respectful. Be respectful of each other. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Julie. If anyone wants to stand or place that beautiful flag, put the table with you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Everybody seen any movie American Sign? We went over and saw it. I don't think it's here in town, although it was dry in the whole place and the place was packed. So when you turn and you look at a flag like this, it gives you a whole other meaning that right now while we sit in a free country, free to come to this meeting, free to do what we wanted to. We've got people that are fighting for us, fighting for that freedom. So other countries can have the same freedom that our sweet United States of America has. So it really means something to take a look at that flag and. Once again, thank y'all for being here. We're so happy to have the garden clubs here. They don't only grow pretty flowers, they're pretty people too. So uh glad to have them here. Uh Hans in your group of the political science, y'all are out at A back and certainly love A back and encourage everything that goes on. Surprised you didn't bring uh David Bridges with you. He didn't want to turn out and talk about talk about political science.
Oh, you I'm not sure you'd want that, huh?
I don't think he did. Yeah, I know him well. I think you're correct. He probably doesn't want that. Uh, but we'll just move right along. Uh, we did have a presentation about Virginia Penney and the Tifton Council Garden Clubs. Uh, this is regarding the Fullwood Garden Center. So uh, Virginia, if you want to come up to this this podium here.
Oh, thank you.
Give us a cry, John. We appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Julie, and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here and thank you for your time. Uh, the petition is for a landmark status site and it is made by the Tifton Council Garden Clubs. The reason for the request are many. To properly identify the location and its benefits to the community, to acknowledge the contributions and give a well-deserved tribute to the prominent and well-respected Tifton family, to protect and preserve this valuable historic site of Tifton and Tiff County, and to embrace Tifton tourism for economic development. We have a statement of significance and there are three parts to it. One is the community benefit, historical benefit, and the architecture. Under community benefit, the Garden Center has long been recognized for its um beautification and education. Its landscapes and gardens are surround the house, have been used for social events such as weddings and family celebrations, birthdays, out-of-door events for local residents and out-of-town residents. The grounds have been used for class instruction, plant identification, and environmental studies. It's become a mini park. We see people jogging through it, taking an afternoon walk, um taking pictures, school pictures, graduation, and also uh prom and wedding. And they stop for a moment of quiet meditation to enjoy it. You know, the Garden Center is also listed on the National and Georgia Historic Places and it's in the Historic District. That location's on West 12th Street. The historical benefits uh that support this request are the, prior to the purchase of it in nineteen eighty-five, it was the home of Paul Deering and Ruth Fullwood. And you know, you are familiar with the history. I know that Mr. Fullwood was an influential vegetable farm producer. He also uh, he and Dr. King of the Coastal Plains Experiment Station uh developed the big boy tomato. You know, that was tomato that was the size of a whole piece of sandwich bread. So um, he brought um seedling growth to Tip, Georgia and to Tifton. And he also, at the in nineteen forty-eight, that was the biggest industry in Tiff County. Mr. Fullwood owned two thousand five hundred acres in Tiff County and a total of four thousand with a combination of surrounding counties. His wife, Mrs. Ruth Dickers Fullwood, was the president of the American Rose Society and the Georgia Rose Society. She also landscaped Fullwood Park, the old hospital, Oak Ridge Cemetery, and was nationally recognized as an authority on roses and wrote many articles and publications throughout the United States. She was the first woman in Georgia to be president of the Board of Trade. I uh you have some papers there that have the history in detail for your consideration. The architecture in itself is a modern Dutch farmhouse, a style not generally seen in this area, and it was built in nineteen sixteen. We just celebrated its one-hundredth year. So uh the uh Fullwood Garden Center, along with the Tifton House, are both a hundred years old in our community. That's something to be proud of. The only outstanding feature of the house is the virgin pine floors. And of course, the architect was one of uh Bruce's cousins and he was from Atlanta. He came down and laid out the plans and then the farmhands built the house under the supervision of Paul and Ruth. The house is understood in its environmental context. Ms. Suzanne Click, the historian for the Garden Center, compiled this information for us and you have her resources there. This concludes my presentation. We thank you for your consideration of this and we uh. Thank you very much. I have to tell you that I'm so excited I can hardly talk because Bruce Green called me right before I left. And ever since he left Tifton, he has been working crazily to accomplish all the things, to make all the parts of the puzzle come together. And he just um was in Tallahassee at the uh Comayia Society, American Comayia Society Convention, and went over to uh Mark Crawford's in uh Valdosta and he said he would be back to here on the seventeenth and the eighteenth. So he is diligently working to support us and make all these things come together.
Thanks so much. Yeah, I'll accept the motion.
I think what we probably need to do is um, and this is sort of hand in glove with what happened at the town hall meeting with versus recognition. Um, and there's no question that Fullwood Garden Center is a landmark for Tifton. And um, we don't, I don't think, I'm not aware of any um official landmark program that we have, but we need to create one. And this needs to be our first entry into that. And then there are probably some other sites that we ought to consider, but I just um applaud what the um members of the Council of Garden Clubs are doing and and not only from a preservation standpoint, but again, from the tourism standpoint and and I know that they're working to um, Ms. Click, to um substantiate the information, the information about Madame Shanghai. Check, am I saying that correctly? I never can say that. Anyways, it's a pretty diverse and interesting history, very unique, and it's something Tifton should be proud of. So, what I'd like to do with your permission, Mayor, is um make this maybe a twofold motion. One, that we establish um landmark status sites for various buildings and properties in our community and let this be the first one. And then um we can explore further how we do that and establish that.
Next question before we do that. This, is it already the blue star? Is there a blue star?
Marker.
Marker there with something to do with the Fullwood.
Well, there is a blue star marker there, one of the original, very small ones, but we have uh two or three in town already. We have one at uh the Welcome Senate, the Agarama. We have.
We need something specific to the Fullwood Garden Center, which the state doesn't have there.
Yes, uh I brought a signage that um I did not get in your information, but if you'd like to see that, you may consider that too.
Yeah, you want to mention that in your in your.
Uh, maybe you want to ask this on that?
Mm-hmm.
That we could have something like that created to designate a landmark status site?
Mm-hmm.
Has anybody seen that?
Since you were considering other possible sites in the future, I thought one should be agreed on, so it'd be continuity through the community.
Sure.
Yeah.
Exactly. Exactly. So Mayor, maybe um what we need to do is just a thought to to create this landmark status site with signage, identification, and criteria to be eligible. That might be the first thing. And then again, you know, the second part of that would be to have the Fullwood Garden Center be the first entry into that. But I think we could maybe um work on signage and criteria and everything if the council feels that's something uh that we could do. So kind of exploring some new territory.
Yeah. Is that the way to put it into a motion, Mr. Attorney?
Well, I think probably what you're looking to do is, I understand what you're saying, Julie, is that you want to basically have some type of resolution whereby you establish landmark status sites, put forth the criteria, uh and then, you know, appropriate signage. So I guess what the uh I I think maybe if you want to maybe have a committee this to establish, I mean, someone's gonna have to establish what criteria you want.
Let me help you.
Thank you, Larry.
City Council's already passed a resolution authorizing the naming of streets and uh uh policy of naming streets, city-owned streets, properties and facilities. Y'all did that one about the street naming thing.
Yes, we did.
But we don't have anything in here. We could probably expand this resolution to include landmark sites and just modify the resolution that will cover all of this.
That's it. So do we still need a a motion to expand on that or just, I need to send a committee, let the committee work with that?
I think what you should do, direct the staff to develop, you know, a proposed criteria and and modifications to that resolution.
Okay.
Then we can take a look and see how that would fit in with what Larry just talked about.
Okay, well, let let staff do that and bring it back to us and we'll actually uh speed it.
Okay.
But I do think that the council is also looking for our support and endorsement of the work that that has been, that all the the architecture of the building, the history of the building, the work that's been done by the Fullwood family and the ongoing work of the council. I think they need our support and our recognition of that in the meantime, so um I guess if we, as a council, if I could make that a motion, that we do endorse and support and and appreciate and applaud all of the above while we're working on creating the landmark status designation. I think that's really important to the council, to the Council Garden Clubs at this point.
Okay, I have a motion.
Sure. And I'm proud to have it in my district. They had so much to tell us the whole. Thank y'all for what y'all did.
Thank you, thank you.
Any brothers a question?
I do have one question. Would this be a historical preservation issue today without shot, or presented to a landmark status? Or would they just come up here and do the vote on it?
Well, I think that's what the our staff can take a look at. They're gonna research that. You can, the council that Larry's talking about, we already voted on it years ago. And see how what we do. We'll we'll do whatever we need to do about the fact.
I'm.
Probably from the historical standpoint.
That's a good point.
I think there is something in the criteria too.
Didn't we use that when they did the thing over on Love Avenue, right close to your your office? They did that with, we had the first female congressman, I think it was, that lived in that house.
Yeah, that's the Susie.
That was that was Susie K. Moore. And the reason that there's a blue star out there that you've got in your mind is because there was a ceremony for her being the first senator, woman senator in the state of Georgia, nineteen thirty-three, if I'm not wrong. And uh they did this ceremony. So that blue star is actually to commemorate Moore Highway being named for her.
That's right.
As that first.
Okay.
Not the Fullwood House. It just happens to run by the side of the.
All right, okay. Well, we'll get back to this. Are you all okay? Okay, well, I need a uh call to vote. If everyone in favor, if you can raise your right hand, say aye. Uh, if you're unanimous. Thank y'all for coming. Listen, y'all are welcome to stay for the meeting. Believe the boy is there. Maybe you want to vote something. I don't know which one will do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate y'all. Appreciate everything y'all did to make our announcement. Okay, we're gonna move right along. We have some special presentations. Scott Merkin, you're here with the S G. Eric Scott, try to keep us all spread away. Try to go, bring yourself a sign. What you standing ready for? Where is he here?
Mayor and Council, I appreciate you uh giving us a few moments of your time this evening. I'm here tonight to uh present some awards to the city. Uh, they've been issued by state agencies and uh they were earned, or the city has sent them, by some of the gentlemen that are in attendance tonight. Now I asked them to step forward in just a minute. Uh, the first of the awards is actually related to uh our sewage system. We uh, for those of you that don't know, uh we have over, well over a hundred miles of sewer system throughout the city proper. And that extends into the county and eventually gets to the uh to the wastewater treatment plant. Um, for years, the number one problem with uh the sewer system had been sewer spills. And that's where uh raw sewage gets onto the ground or escapes the pipes and represents a pretty profound health risk. Um, some years ago, uh municipalities throughout the state of Georgia, and actually throughout the US, adopted a program designed to eliminate that, uh trying to stop that. And it was uh, since most of those spills were related to, in effect, grease buildup in the pipes, that program was an F O G program, or fat soil and grease program. There are a number of municipalities throughout the state that administer that and uh we were awarded this year. Uh, no thanks to Randall Mathis. I'll ask to ask Mr. Mathis to step up here. We were awarded uh as the finest program in the state, number one overall, competed against another, a number of competitors. And uh this award was won for us by this man right here. Randall is very conscientious. He administers this program very effectively, as evidenced by uh his uh, you know, award issued uh through the state. Um, again, Randall interacts with a number of vendors throughout town, uh certainly does a number of inspections. And it's a pretty tedious task when you're talking about the number of miles that are involved. He also operates several of our very expensive uh pieces of, very unique piece of equipment. We've got two VAC trucks each, uh around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and Randall manages both of those for us as well. So with that, I'd like to present this award to the city of Tifton, again, earned for us on behalf of uh Mr. Mathis, right here.
Randall.
Mr. Randall, are you still the president of that procession or?
No, sir. No, sir, I'm not the president. But I am in there.
That's right.
Randall, thank you for your hard work, your diligence throughout the time. I know I've seen you two o'clock in the morning after that. That's when I first came aboard. Then I got smart and decided not to come out and watch all of it.
Well, you're you're welcome to come out anytime.
I'm sure.
I think I still have.
Number you can call.
I I still have his phone number.
Hold something. It's my big hug.
I still have his phone number.
Thanks for having a great one.
Thanks, Randall.
Uh, next, um for those of you that are aware or may not be aware, Randy, we uh, the city has a laboratory facility. It's actually based at the treatment facility, the the wastewater treatment plant, and it conducts uh well over twenty thousand tests annually. And the tests are related to both the water quality for our drinking water system and the compliance of our wastewater system. Um, they both uh, both permits, both the drinking water permit and the wastewater permit, require very, very strict uh monitoring to make sure that uh we're complying with those requirements and a certain measure of quality control that goes into that. For this year, this year was our first time, Tifton's first time to compete statewide in the Lab of the Year programs. Uh, we compete against uh over a thousand municipalities, some with very, very immense resources. City of Atlanta, Winnet County, they've uh invested huge sums of money into these programs and have done it for years on end. Um, when we first entered this uh competition, I was hopeful that we might place in the top ten. That was our goal. Um, we've actually done quite a bit better than that in our first year. Uh, the laboratory, which is uh again at the wastewater plant, it's managed by Mr. Chanel Hul, who's here tonight. Chanel, if you'll come up here. And uh the water and wastewater production and treatment facility is managed by, come on, Mr. Thomas Coker, come up here as well. Um, despite this stiff competition, they were able to finish second in the state, beating out some very, very large municipalities that have, again, immense resources. And uh this is the uh, this is the uh certificate of distinguished merit that was presented by us for our, in this case, our water laboratory, drinking water laboratory. Again, I'll I'll ask you, it's presented to the city of Tifton on behalf of those men, in this case, that that have won this award for us. And again, with relation to the wastewater laboratory, we finished second in the state in the wastewater category as well. So we're very proud. Um, this is due entirely to the two gentlemen that are here. Uh, Chanel in particular manages the laboratory. He's done a phenomenal job out there. Uh, Chanel has an extreme attention to detail and is a very devoted employee for us and the city of Tifton. And through their efforts, uh we've been recognized as among the best laboratories in the state, certainly within the, certainly far better than I ever expected we would do. But uh they've done outstanding job in there.
Chanel, Thomas, applause.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, y'all. It's uh mighty good to know you so. It came so close to something like a laugh, but that's all right. But it just goes with to show what Larry's been telling the council and mayor all this time. We've got some of the best people anywhere. That's everybody. Everybody that works for the city, works for the S G, we've got a great group of others that has just uh kind of qualified us. Thank y'all. Thank y'all so much. We now want to move on to the approval of the council agenda. How's it going? I didn't think it was. Uh, I'll I'll accept the motion.
How many motions to approve the agenda presented?
Sir?
I have a motion. Second, any brothers a question? Seeing none, if they're pleased, if you've already raised your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Now, students, why do y'all think we had to approve the council agenda? Can anybody tell me that? I mean, we're here, we're open to the agenda. That's what we're here for. That's why we all showed up. So I wonder why we have to approve the council agenda? I was hoping y'all would know, 'cause I don't know. No, it's this far. Uh, this, these are legal things that you have to do. Uh, we know we've got a count, we've got an agenda here. But we also have to put it into the record. Is that right, Miss Ronan? And by by voting on this, that sets the record, that sets it in motion, if you will, for the entire meeting for tonight. Because when you have a meeting, that's why they got me up here. Uh, we have to stick with everything that's on the agenda. We can't move outside of that. Or we're in violation of state law, actually, or Robert's rule of order per. So that's why we do that. And uh, just little tidbit, I'll give you. Next thing we have, uh something we love to do, uh because like we said earlier, we work for y'all. You and y'all are A back. Y'all are our bosses too, because we want you to pay for you and and share it for you. Come into our restaurants, we want you to be A number one, go to our theaters, travel our roads. So we work for y'all. So we have a citizen input time. We let anybody come up and speak, or any amount of them that they want to. And we have what, five minutes they can speak? Miss Ronan, I don't believe I saw what we're.
I did not see anyone sign up, but.
That doesn't mean they don't love us. If there's anybody out there that wants to come up and speak, uh feel free to take the podium, give your name, your address. That's fine. We don't always have people to get up and speak, but uh they do have the opportunity and we we enjoy that. We also have the approval of the minutes, the approval of the following minutes, January the fifth of twenty fifteen, which was our regular meeting. I have a motion.
Second.
A second, any further discussion? Seeing none, if the citizens raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Uh, there is no consent agenda, right? We have some resolutions. We have the uh Resolution Number Two, which is the re- resolution accepting the twenty fourteen annual audit.
I'll make a motion.
Well, that's, why don't we listen to our CFO, who.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I I should say that.
We believe you, Lois. It's okay.
My bad.
Well, this resolution is just the authorized part was presented to you in the last meeting and uh uh in accordance with uh governmental accounting and reporting standards.
Congrats.
Mr. Mayor.
No, you can't. You can't go. Is that what you're pushing to tell them?
I want y'all to know that we have come to an agreement. It's just gonna stay with us for three more years.
Yeah.
We're just working on the details.
It is my honor to be here and I want to say the past two and a half years have been a little trying at times, uh but it's also been a challenge and I'm, I I enjoy a challenge. So uh hopefully the next three years will be better and I know it will be. So I have a good staff and and I just, I just love the city of Tifton and uh they even named the street after me before I got here.
God bless you, Lois. Thank you so much. Let me explain to everybody. We uh, we got Lois kind of temporarily. We've had her temporarily for what, three years now?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. And I had threatened to build a, you know, the wall of China. I I threatened to build a wall, but she couldn't get out. She couldn't let, because she's that good. She's our chief financial officer and just does a super, super, super job. She puts her heart into it. She loves it. She loves this country. So uh this was news. You kept this quiet. Four and a half, five, I didn't know about this, but this is excellent news. Another two and a half years.
Three. Three years.
I worried you'd cut down the signal. I'm sorry. God bless. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
We got a resolution that we need a motion.
Well, we do.
I'll second with the motion.
Let's make a motion for the resolution accepting the twenty fourteen annual audit.
Have a second, Mr. President. Further discussion? Seeing none, if the citizens raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Resolution providing for surplus of old fire station building at two oh four North Ridge and you came by.
I have no intention of buying it, Mr. President. It's in the historic history. Anyway, uh.
Yeah, the city cabbage yourself.
Yeah, let me get my foot out of my mouth now. That's a, that's an ongoing joke between some uh real estate people and myself. That's a, that's an ongoing joke between some real estate people and myself. And it's been going on for several years now, so it's not a secret. Anyway, as you know, we have moved out of the old, well, utilities building, city hall, fire station, pick, pick a name for it. 204 Ridge Avenue, North Ridge, I believe it is. And the city will no longer be in need of that facility once we remove the pumping apparatus out of the back room of it and the coordination and all that. And we're in the process of doing that now. We're going to cap off, I think it's two wells, Scott, is that correct? We're going to cap two of the wells off of there because, but we don't want to intervene to them with all the other wells we have around the city. We can maintain our water pressure levels and all that stuff that they do the fancy engineering work with on pressure, pressurizing system. So you can always have 60 PSI at your house or whatever it is. So staff's requesting that council declare that, declare that property surplus and get a appraisal of it. And at some point in time, once we get all the equipment moved out of it, put it on the market for sale.
Thank you, Mayor. You got any time for any of that?
We're looking at Scott.
Probably about another 90 days.
Pretty much.
Thanks, sir. Next resolution is for.
I need a motion on that resolution.
Mayor.
I need a motion on the resolution for.
Oh, you do, don't you, for the fire, I've just moved right ahead of myself. I accept, I accept a motion.
So.
I'll second.
I've got a motion, second, if further discussion on the selling of the fire station.
Larry, what's the procedure on?
We have to get, we have to get a appraisal done on the building. We have to sell it for fair market value, literally have to offer it out there for fair market value. We can't take less than fair market value. We'll advertise it for 30 days and then we'll accept single bids on, or proposals.
Okay, no other discussion. All in favor, please, if you raise your right hand, say aye. That is your answer. Now, we'll be going to the next resolution. Providing for alcoholic beverage license for Shell Food Party, 2302, US Highway 41, North.
Yes, I presented this at workshop. They're changing their corporate name only. This gentleman's been in business out there for several years and staff is recommending approval of this resolution.
Okay, now I accept a motion.
I'll make a motion for resolution number four.
Second.
I've got a motion, second, if further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That is your answer. This act, next item number five is to approve reappointment of Dr. Greg Anderson to the Tifton Airport Authority. I actually served on that authority with Greg and have since I've been there. Greg does a splendid job. In fact, he had called me today to remind me that we have just secured funds of about $1.4 million federal funds and 1.4, almost 1.1 state funds, 1.1 million funds, so 10 hour runway. And do some things that we, that we've been doing, been planning to do for years and years and years. So that is good and I would, I would hope that we would keep Greg Mary's doing a splendid, splendid job. So at, at this point, he does want to continue to serve, so at this point, I would accept a motion.
Mayor, I made a motion that we appoint, reappoint Dr. Anderson to that airport authority.
I'll second.
I've got a motion, second, if further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
And that is your answer. In other business, approval of the bid for Hunt Road Utility Project Number 103. As the relocation of the gas lines and installation of sewer service. And we worked, went over that at the workshop.
Do they have any questions on?
Well, we make the motion, second, then we can ask the questions. Unless you want.
I'll give y'all some background. I don't think we had this at the workshop.
These, the next two items on your agenda tonight is the relocation of utilities for the Hunt Road project. As you all know, the Chamber announced the Hobby Lobby coming to Tifton. And this is in conjunction with that project. One of the bids on there, the low bid was from Little River Construction. And I don't remember the numbers, they kept them there in front of you.
242, 267.
Thank you. Low bid was 242, 257 from Little River Construction. And then the, I think we had three bids on that one, is that correct? My, my, my iPad just went kaput. The other item on the agenda is the actual road construction. There's $185,000 in Elmeek money that was contributed by the state of Georgia to, because it connects 82, that one portion of what I think is going to be called Larkin Road. It's going to line up on Carpenter Road and it'll actually tie in right there at the intersection of where Larkin Road comes in now. The other is the rerouting of Hunt Road that will go basically behind Hobby Lobby and it'll tie into Larkin Road, which will then tie up. So we're not losing anything as far as accessibility, we're just moving the road. This, all of these, the road part of this has been paid for through a partnership between the Tifton Development Authority, City of Tifton, Tifton County, and State of Georgia.
Right to where?
What was the amount of that bid?
528, 526.
Say again?
528, 526, and the low bid was Rimes Construction.
All right, I have a motion.
For number six, or are we doing six and seven again?
You've been separately.
Yeah, number six, one of the.
I make the motion to approve, I don't know if you see.
Second.
I have a motion, second, if further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That is your answer. I'll ask for a motion for item seven.
How many motions for item seven?
Second.
I got a motion, second, if further discussion, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, we need to identify the, the low bid in each of those motions.
Because the low bid was Rimes?
Rimes Construction.
Okay, so I made my motion to include the low bid or was Rimes Construction?
That's for the road now. Little River was the low bid for the utilities, item six.
Then Little River.
All right, I'll make my motion to include the low bid of Rimes.
You're saying that Rimes is on construction, okay. Okay, and I have a second on the item seven.
Yes, sir.
Two, a second then. Okay, a second. Okay, in further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you raise your right hand, say aye. That is your answer. Discussion of Transportation Funding Act of 2015. Don't get after Cleveland.
They have.
We're going to need them right here.
As you know, when we attended the Mayor's Day conference, Councilman Ellers and I can't remember, maybe, who was in that one with you, Wes? Do you know, did she?
John.
John?
Yeah.
They were in the Transportation Committee meeting and we were made aware that the state of Georgia was planning on doing something to figure out how to fund transportation. What we heard was not very good news for us. They were talking, they were talking about taking the lost local option sales tax off of motor fuels and also talking about taking the special purpose local option sales tax off of motor fuels. And you, you know, penny for each gallon of gasoline pumped in Tifton, Tifton County. That's very bad for the city of Tifton. It was to the tune of well over a million dollars that we would lose if they did that. Since that time, I've met with the county manager who has sat down with our representatives and they have told them as late as Friday afternoon that that is still on the table. It has not been nailed down yet, so I'm sure that all of you get the legislative alerts. This is something we need to stay on top of and we need to make our voices heard in Atlanta in, in a cooperative spirit so that we can come up with the best deal for, for the state of Georgia and Tifton, how this transportation gets funded. It's not looking very good right now. So we need to stay on top of it. Mayor, I know you have personal relationships with our representatives, so, and the rest of council. And I want to stay on top of it from a staff perspective, but we really need to talk to the office if we can't participate in this process and come up with the very best deal we can come up with.
I understand that Tony Rowl and Jim, either were going up there or have gone up there.
They did, they went to Atlanta last week. I can't remember which day of the week it was, but it was last week and they spent about two and a half hours with Jay Roberts. During the time they were in there, this bill was being developed and Departments of Revenue and other departments of the state were coming in and they were all trying to see what kind of funding method they could come up with that would make the most sense and did what's best for citizens, for the state of Georgia.
I'd like for us to up there and also talk to Tyler. He's got the new position in that and, and, so whenever you get very sure out of the north, then, you know.
As soon as we can get them during session, so we have to pry them out, but be happy to do that. From what I understand right now, all of our representatives are on board with this new legislation that's coming out so far. So we just be, need to be mindful of that. And like I said, we need to be working within a cooperative spirit to get the best deal we can possibly come up with.
I agree, well.
Mayor, one of the things that Columbus did, they actually passed a resolution in opposition to the legislation. That's something that we might want to consider doing as well.
Several other towns have to.
Well, I didn't see the bill that was actually presented to the floor until Friday morning. I know that.
We may want to workshop that and talk about hospitality and something like that. I want to report the possibility that you want to proceed with that, both of you.
We're in workshop.
Well, it is.
Do you think it would be beneficial since impact's not only the city, but county and the school board and everyone else who receives?
From a staff level, from, from the staff level, we're all working those issues right now. But like I said, I just saw the bill Friday morning, so, and it's.
The community representative has put one set up.
So.
It would be possible, you know, to, I can talk with Tony Rowl and Jim and Larry and maybe we do a joint city-county resolution in opposition to.
Well, we don't have anything, it's still very fluid right now. We don't have anything concrete to actually work on, to know what I mean.
Yeah, we need to, need to kick it around a little bit, I think, because I agree, we need to act freely. Let's, let's massage it a little bit, make sure, you know, what their mindset is and go. Okay, so there's no need to act on anything there.
What's the, is there a timeframe for when they're, they're just seeking to have this put together about in the session? Or is there a specific timeframe in that they're working under, one of them?
I can only assume that they're going to have it through the legislature this time. And it's purely an assumption on my part, I know they want to do something, they have to do something, the transportation trust fund is broke, basically. So there's, we have to do something to fund, to figure out how to fund transportation. And that's the resurancing, that's the building new roads, it's all of these things that we're currently doing with our splosh money and lost money. So, and the Elmeek money that we're grants, we get from the state, so.
We've got time, we've still got to do across them.
Right.
We've got all that.
And, and it just hit the committee, so.
Yes, so we've got some time. But we need to use time.
We can't, we can't.
No.
We can't wait to fall by the wayside. That would not be good. That's right. We're working, actually, the county managers already had a call in to the Department of Revenue to see if they can get the fuel numbers for Tifton and Tifton County. So we're already working that angle.
There's a broad range, I was reading an article on it, it said there's a range from 30 to 50 to 60 percent. So I'm, you know, it's, it's, I don't know how accurate that is yet, but I was just reading the article the other day, I have noted that.
It's a lot.
And of course, it would vary between municipalities and counties.
All right, well, moving right along, we have, that's it.
We have executive session, so.
We certainly appreciate y'all coming tonight and we'd bore you dead. Well, y'all all bring your red apple takers. We appreciate you bringing them out. Thank you, everybody else for being here. We'll give the room time to clear out. I need a motion as well, if we want to do a second discussion.
Legal, legal, real estate and first real matters. Briefly on the first real matter.
First real, real estate and real matters.
All the further discussion, if further, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Your answer, let's go right.